Okay, I call this meeting to order. At this time, we'll stand for the invocation by Mr. Garber, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we are grateful that through your Son, you extend us your grace and new life. And Lord, we pray, as we begin this new season of budgeting, that our leaders and staff would be granted wisdom and insight into your plan for our great city. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Thank you. At this time, I have a proclamation. This week is the National Payroll Week, September 5th through the 9th, 2022. Whereas, the American Payroll Association and its more than 20,000 members have launched a nationwide public awareness campaign that pays tribute to the nearly 150 million people who work in the United States and the payroll professionals who support the American system by paying wages, reporting workers' earnings, and withholding federal employment taxes. And whereas, payroll professionals in Corinth, Texas, play a key role in maintaining -- thought I lost it. Maintaining the economic health of Corinth, carrying out such diverse tasks as paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information for child support enforcement, and carrying out tax withholding, reporting, and depositing. And whereas, payroll departments collectively spend more than $2.4 trillion annually, compiling with midred federal and state wages and tax laws. And whereas, payroll professionals play an increasingly important role ensuring the economic security of American families by helping to identify noncustodial parents from making sure they comply with their child support mandates. And whereas, payroll professionals have become increasingly proactive in educating both the business community and the public at large about the payroll tax withholding system. And whereas, payroll professionals meet regularly with federal and state officials to discuss both improving and compliance with government procedures and how compliance can be achieved at less cost to both government and businesses. And whereas, the week in which Labor Day falls has been proclaimed the National Payroll Week. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Bill Heidemann, Mayor of the City of Corinth, support the efforts of the payroll professionals in the City of Corinth, Texas, and do hereby proclaim the week of September 5th through the 9th, 2022, as Payroll Week. Signed, the 4th day of August, 2022. I believe there's a representative here to receive this.
Oh, great, thank you.
How are you doing? You want to stand right over here?
Where do you want me?
Yeah. There's your flag.
Thank you.
You want to podium?
Oh, no, thank you. I appreciate this. And this is a payroll week, so it is. Yeah, I'm glad to do the job.
Okay, citizens' comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council, may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Counsel is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time. When you come to the podium, please state your name and your address for the records, please. First, is it Arlene Jackson?
Good evening. Arlene Wimberly Jackson, and my address is 2107 Bowie Lane, Corinth, Texas. I'm standing tonight in reference to freezing senior citizens' taxes, 65 and over. We have -- we would like the city to give us some consideration on freezing the taxes here at the City of Corinth. What is my city going to do for me? Is my question of what is it going to do for us that's over 65 and older? We built here in 1996, and at that time, it was 5,098 people. Now it's 23,174 people. We were young, and now we're old. We won't -- now we own pensions and extremely high inflation we're dealing with. So when the smaller towns are giving their citizens these benefits, like Lake Wood Village, they were only in 2020, they were only 1,200 -- I mean, 1,026 people. Ponder, 2,394 people. Double Oak, 3,090 people. Larger cities like Denton, Lewisville, Little Lamb, Frisco, to just name a few, are doing that. And I've been here from the very beginning and for a long time. I was here when they cut the trees down. I had the Longhorns were in the fields. I know. So now I want to know what my city's going to do for me. The capacity has gone huge. We -- I've seen the capacity go from -- we got businesses coming up everywhere. We have also -- we have our communities coming up. So we need to -- I'd like to see the city consider doing something for your senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is it Melane Bristow? Please state your name and your address, please.
Melanie Bristow. I'm at 2013 Yellowstone Lane in Corinth. I'm not used to speaking, so bear with me. I want to talk about the rezoning of the LSMR. It was originally zoned as single-family homes. I ask you to look at the reasons for this. There are single-family homes on all four sides of this proposed zoning change. I'm concerned about traffic studies done, not taking other developments going on now into consideration in that traffic study, so it's not as accurate as the developer claims it is. I am concerned about mixed residential will result in transient residents in the single-family home community, including students with no pride of ownership. That's very apparent in surrounding neighborhoods now. I'm concerned about developer's grand plan. He's selling -- the grand plan he's selling, the Planning and Zoning Committee, when the city has no control over what he does with this property or later on, selling pieces of this property in the future and not managing it. I'm concerned about any development around a gas well, capped or not, because the pipes that carry the gas are not one mile down like the well itself. I'm concerned about potential illnesses in the future, cancer or whatever, that may come to light 20 to 30 years from now based on building around this property or on this property. I'm concerned city staff and elected officials are not looking out for their citizens' best interests but are instead being swayed by the power of a dollar in someone else's pocket. Ask yourself how this zoning change in your current citizen is in your current citizens' best interest. Finally, I urge you to pass on to the Planning and Zoning Commission the direction relayed to the council in the workshop tonight that you wish to hold any changes to the strategic plan or comp plan until the new city manager is hired, and that would include zoning changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Austin Ortega. Please state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. Austin Ortega, 2801 Custer Drive. My concern is the same, the LSMR project. As current projects north of Lake Sharon have changed back to single-family housing, we're looking at and are really interested in what that means for the property in question. Essentially, we're looking to keep it the way it is, but ideally, only for single-family home, not as the empty property. That would be the best-case scenario, but realistically, no one's asking for that. Development is inevitable. And it's somebody else's property, it's somebody else's money. You can't ask them to do or take a hit for that. However, the impact from multifamily, from apartments, does have an impact against our homes and our asset values. So there are concerns there from the citizenry around it. We look at some of the issues that are still up as the plan has not changed since its last iteration. The wells that exist on there. City ordinances that currently exist is 1,000-foot. Everything that's been proposed is within 300 feet. Now that's due to the developer's HUD financing. That's that zoning requirement. However, we've had since 2010 an ordinance saying 1,000-foot. So the question then becomes, what's the precedence for zoning to even rehear this, knowing that the ordinance is already in violation before they're presented? Realistically, a developer needs to come back with some sort of process to actually say how he's going to cap, fix, or solve this problem, and not just that he somehow grandfathered in third-party on land that he doesn't currently own, that's owned by somebody else, who yet a third-party sage owns the gas wells. It becomes a strange argument. That was originally laid forward, that he has somehow managed to find a loophole into that. So overall, really just concerned about that property, the impact against the city, the impact against the schools. As we just heard in the workshop, impacts to infrastructure, as we have other developments that are currently being built, excuse me, in the city. And while those are only still in development, they will be done at some point. And if we continue to build after that, we need to take into consideration those impacts as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael King.
Hello, counsel. Michael King, 2610 Zachary Drive. Most of y'all know me. And I'm going to speak a little differently tonight. Y'all have heard the citizens' concerns about the property that we're talking about, 60 acres owned by Mr. John Ball. One thing that we never seem to do is we always want to take the piece of the pie with the most whipped cream on it. And we never hear the conversations about the entire pie. And all the conversations I've been involved with, and I've spoken to many of y'all, some of y'all, many city officials, and as you all know, many residents. Facts don't lie. Like when you do a traffic study, and you do a traffic study, you ought to be a little more inclusive of the whole pie versus just the piece of the pie with the most whipped cream. And what I mean by that is when you do a traffic study and you're only inclusive of one development that's being surrounded instead of all the developments that are being built around it, that should invalidate that study. Example, the particular property we're talking about, if you look at the traffic study done, it included what we know as Ashford. But what portion of that pie of Ashford did it include? Phase 1. What about phase 2, phase 3, and phase 4? The numbers aren't in there. I've looked at it 15 times. They're not there. Only inclusive of phase 1. Why? Because that would be inclusive of the completion time of this project if it would have went off on schedule. I got a minute and 10 seconds. It's amazing that the original application is now the current application. As you guys know, P&amp;Z tabletop'd it. There was a lot of discussions about the wells. And I want to put this out there for you when it comes to the wells, because the wells are very concerning. Now, especially now that they're going to be capped. Everybody's quoted the 1,000-foot ordinance. It's Title 11, Chapter 114, Part 130 of the city ordinances. It talks about 1,000-foot setback, reducible to 600 by majority vote of council. And the biggest concern is, is it a new well by an existing home or a new home by an existing well? What is the number-one word that everybody uses when they talk about the well? Safety. The developer used the word nine times in his P&amp;Z meeting when he talked about capping those wells. Safety. So what play? I'm asking you all to take that into consideration when it comes -- gets to your point. Who cares if it's a new well by an old home or an old home by a new well? Safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Head.
Hello, Brian Head, 2700 Warwick Drive, Corinth. So in 1996, I bought my very first house in Corinth. So I have been a resident of Corinth for 26 years. Sold that house, bought my second house in Corinth. So I spent over half my life as a resident of Corinth. I am concerned about the rezoning of the same property that everyone else is talking about, the LSMR. This property is the southern portion of the Lake Sharon central area in the comprehensive plan. It is surrounded on all four sides either by existing homes or homes that are being built. This -- the plan, which he can change whenever he wants, even after it gets rezoned, is including three- and four-story apartment buildings in the middle of successful existing family homes and future family homes, single-family homes. He talks about 580 units. The infrastructure can't handle that. And when he talks about his taxes, he talks about taxes. He says, "This is going to bring 2.5 million in property tax." Well, if you did 174 houses, single-family homes on that, that'd bring 2 million. What he doesn't talk about is 2.5 it brings, is how much loss value. There's 350 houses within 500 feet of that place. They're going to lose about 10%. You're going to lose about 300,000. I use 375 for my average. You guys had 352 in there. So it's a wash. Do you want to stick multifamily homes in the middle of successful, single-family homes? No, you're got -- all you're getting is more stress on your infrastructure. The master plan, what you call, he's called the comprehensive plan, is your Bible. And we all have documents at work. But over time, those get changed, and it's time for that to get updated. And we're not talking about going out there and saying, "Hey, what do we want to do in the future?" We're saying it needs to be updated for what's been already done. There's already been decisions made. And if we can't go in and update this comprehensive plan with decisions that have already been made and look at obvious decisions that need to be made for this property and leave it a single-family, and we have to wait until we get a city manager for that, then we obviously need to wait until we get a city manager to determine any rezoning of any property in the entire City of Corinth. If we can't do the obvious.
Thank you. Christine Larson.
I'm Christine Larson. I live at 2702 Zachary Drive. And basically, I have the same feelings that everybody has spoken about previously. And I'm just here to say I don't think we should move forward in the fact that if we shouldn't rezone or make any decisions that are currently out there, meaning the property on Lake Sharon Drive, if we are waiting to -- for the city to hire a new city manager. So I think that any discussion on potential development should be paused as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Nana Fick?
Hi. My name is Eliana Fickus, and I live at 2712 Cherokee Trail. I am in opposition of the LSMR development. I am in support of single-family homes. I would like the 2040 plan to be changed to single-family homes in this location. And I agree that the seniors do need to get the tax stuff frozen. So thank you.
Thank you. Is it Dina Kupik? Okay. All right. Very good. At this point in time, I will entertain a motion on a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Business agenda. Consider and act on a resolution approving the amended and restated bylaws of the Corinth Economic Development Corporation. Mrs. Bundemeyer.
Yes, thank you. At this time, I'm going to call Elise Back, the city's Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. In your packet, you have a copy of the amended and restated bylaws for the Corinth Economic Development Corporation. And there's basically two amendments to the current bylaws that we are proposing. And they were discussed at the July 11th EDC Board of Directors meeting. So they pertain to the regular meetings and the titles for the officers and staff. In regards to the regular meetings, the EDC currently meets on a monthly basis, the first Monday of the month. There is three options that we propose. The first one is keeping the board meetings once a month. Second option was to hold them bimonthly, so they would be held the first Monday of every other month. And the third option was quarterly, so the first Monday of the beginning of the quarter. The EDC Board decided to move forward with option number two, which means holding bimonthly meetings, so the first Monday of every other month. And during those months that we do not meet, the Economic Development Director would send the board members a copy of her monthly director's report just to keep the board apprised. In terms of the titles for the officers, we are proposing that we change the president and vice president to chair and vice chair, respectively. And the executive director's title would be changed to Economic Development Director. So the board, EDC Board and staff, recommend that council adopt the amended and restated bylaws as presented.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you very much.
So just, so in terms of option, which option would you prefer in terms of holding the regular board meetings? Do you agree with the option number two, bimonthly?
I was going to move for bimonthly.
Okay, thank you.
What do you want?
Bimonthly is fine with me.
Mayor, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 22-08-04-15, amending the CEDC's restated bylaws, modifying Section 4.2, regular meetings to be held bimonthly, and modifying Section 5.1A, titles in terms of officers, and Section 5.5, Economic Development Director reporting structure.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Cast your vote.
I think I may have hit the wrong button. So it -- my green button lit up, but apparently abstained, and I did not intend to do that, so. Yes, for me, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Okay. Consider and act on the Second Amendment Unimproved Property Contract with MR Development Corporation and Carlton Development Limited for the purchase of 7.533 acres on or before December 31st, 2022, and the option to purchase the remaining 6.04 acres on or before September 30th, 2023, formerly known as the Hans property for a multifamily development. Mrs. Bundemeyer.
Yes, so I'm actually going to ask Elise Back, and she actually has the next two items. So she's just going to stay up at the podium for a little bit.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So in your packet, you have a copy of the Second Amendment Unimproved Property Contract between MR Development and Carlton Development. We do have the developers with us tonight. We have Kim McCaslin representing MR Development and Jeff Fulenchuk with Carlton Development. So the initial contract was approved by council back in December of 2021, and that was for the 6-point acre tract. Then we did another amendment in February to increase the size of phase 1 from 5.9 acres to 6.2 acres. So this amended contract is looking at three things. First one is to extend the closing date from August 31st to December 31st of this year. Number two, allowing the developer to have the option of purchasing phase 2 of the property, which is just over 6 acres. And they have the option to purchase that on or before September of 2023. And the third thing is, is that we would amend the sale price for phase 1 and phase 2 to reflect the increases in the acreage for phase 1, which was initially 6.2, and it went up to 7.3. And then for phase 2, the acreage that they would be purchasing would be just over 6 acres. So staff is recommending that council approve the contract as presented.
Are there any questions from council? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 22-08-04-16, approving the Second Amendment Unimproved Property Contract with MR Development Corporation and Carlton Development Limited, amending the purchase date on or before December 31st, 2022, with an option to purchase the remaining 6.04 acres on or before September 30th, 2023.
I second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Consider and act on an amended unimproved property contract with Wolverine Interests for the purchase of the 4.692 acres within the Agora District for a mixed-use development. Mrs. Bundemeyer.
Yes, Elise is going to handle this item as well.
So before you have the amended unimproved property contract with Wolverine Interests, we have Jim Leslie and Nadia Christian with Wolverine Interests in the audience. The initial contract was approved by council back in December of 2021. This amendment is basically to extend their closing date from July of this year to the end of December 2022. So staff recommends that council approve the amended contract as presented.
Any questions from council? I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would move to approve item number eight, Resolution Number 22-08-04-17, approving the amended unimproved property contract with Wolverine Interests for the purchase of 4.692 acres within the Agora District for a mixed-use development.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Consider and act on a resolution of the City of Corinth, a home rule municipality and qualifying taxing entity of Denton County, Texas, casting a vote of disapproval of the Denton County Appraisal District, DCAD, 2023 budget as approved by the DCAD Board of Directors, providing for the incorporation of premises and providing an effective date. Mrs. Bundemeyer.
Thank you. So each year, the -- based on the property tax code, the appraisal district is required to submit a budget to all the taxing entities for your review and in consideration. Should a taxing entity wish to approve the budget, then no action is needed by that entity. However, if you choose to disapprove the budget, then that must be done through a resolution. At a previous council workshop meeting, we did have the discussions on and reviewed the budget and discussed the appraisal district. And at that time, the -- reviewed the budget and discussed the appraisal district. And at that time, the council did provide direction to submit the resolution for your review to disapprove the budget with some conditions of allow making them statements about the having them do the strategic plan and make some operational changes. Those statements have been incorporated into the resolution. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? I'd entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-08-04-18, cast a vote of disapproval of the proposed 2023 DCAD budget in order to allow the board leadership to evaluate the operations of the district, to develop a strategic plan to address issues identified in the consultant's evaluation of district operations, and to make changes necessary to meet the needs of the taxing entities.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Consider and approve the dark fiber lease and network agreement between the City of Corinth and Pavlov Media Incorporated, authorizing a public-private partnership for the deployment of a fiber-to-premises network throughout the lake cities. Mrs. Bundamire?
Yes, thank you. So the city has been working with Pavlov for almost a year to do the contract for the dark fiber lease. The contract that was submitted within your packet included the four lake cities. Since that time, one of the lake cities, the city of Lake Dallas, their city council did not approve the agreement at the end of last week. So therefore, at the beginning of this week, we did submit a revised contract to the city council for your consideration to move forward with the three lake cities of Hickory Creek, Shady Shores, and Corinth.
Are there any questions on council? If not, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I would move to approve the dark fiber lease and network agreement between the City of Corinth and Pavlov Media, Inc., authorizing a public-private partnership for the deployment of a fiber-to-premises network throughout the lake cities, as defined in the revised agreement circulated to council earlier this week, subject to the following conditions. The city's approval is contingent upon the agreement being approved and executed by both the town of Hickory Creek and the town of Shady Shores. And the effective date of the agreement will be the later of August 15, 2022, or the last date upon which either the town of Hickory Creek or the town of Shady Shores execute the agreement, obligating Corinth to pay an amount not to exceed $2,500,000, and to authorize the mayor and interim city manager to execute all necessary documents to effectuate the purpose of the agreement.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Council comment and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public and/or staff, on any issue or future events. Also, in accordance with Section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added to added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Burke?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Garber?
Yeah, two quick things. The first is, I was wondering if before we start doing the interviews for the boards, if we could have a quick workshop, not so much on the process. There's just a couple of questions that I have before moving forward with the interviews. And second, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, some very familiar faces and some faces that I've never seen before ever. And so it's always nice to see new people in the audience. I did take notes as fast as I possibly could, and I'm sure other council members did too. But of course, without an agenda item, we can't discuss it. I can't ask questions. So I would hope that if this development ever makes it to council, that you guys would show back up and re-ask your questions so that we can address them. Thank you.
Mr. Holsworth?
Thank you, Sam. I I'm sorry, Scott. I second your comments about the public neighborhood showing up. We appreciate very much your input, and we look forward to seeing you back again. Nothing else, Mayor.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes, sir. I had asked last council meeting to talk about our restaurants, of how we may be able to help them. So I'm going to ask if maybe we can talk about that on the next agenda.
Mrs. Picken?
I have nothing, Mayor. Thanks.
Mrs. Bundamire?
Nothing, thank you.
It's always great to see an audience. And most times when we're having council meetings, it's pretty bare out there. So again, I would second the motion on the part of Scott Garber. So again, you're always welcome. If you want the podium, you got three minutes. So with that, we're going to go into closed session. Tonight, we're going to go into legal advice. 551.071. We've got personnel matters, 551.074. And we've got economic development, 551.087. So at this time, it's at 8:09, we're going into executive session.